Welcome to the Wairika City Council meeting for April 1st, 2025. The time according to the city council clock is 6:31. Please join us in the pledge allegiance. Okay, just a few housekeeping rules before we get going here on our council meeting is to make sure you silence all cell phones at this time. Just remind audience members there's no talking or be whittling other speakers at the podium. If you need to have a conversation, please step outside and have that conversation. Because it is disruptive to our speaker and to the rest of the council. All right. Sorry. One second here. Okay, we did have a closed session. Meeting this evening at 5:30 and there is no reportable action. We started at 5:30 ended at 6:00 PM for our city clerk. And that's no reportable action regarding closed session.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome, city clerk. Okay, I'll do roll call. Councilman Claire.
Here.
Councilman Davis.
Here.
Councilman Baker.
Present.
Councilman McCoy.
Here.
And Mayor Middleton present, so the whole council is present this evening. Privilege agenda, this is time to approve the agenda as presented. Or make any changes, what is the wishes of the council?
This is Councilman McCoy, I'll make the motion that we prove the agenda as shown.
We have the motion of Councilman McCoy to approve the agenda. I will second the motion. I'll do roll call, Councilman Claire.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Councilman Baker.
Yes.
Councilman Middleton, yes, the motion passes five to zero. No presentations this night, or tonight, I'm sorry. Public comment, public participation is welcomed and invited to all city council meetings. This time is set aside for residents to address the city council on matters listed on a consent agenda as well as other items not included on the regular agenda. If your comments concern an item noted on the regular agenda, please address that council when that item is open for public comment. The city requests that persons addressing the city council refrain from making personal slanders, profane, or disruptive remarks. Council members when recognized by the mayor may ask clarifying questions of the presenter, but no action may be taken by the city council during the public comment section of the meeting under the Brown Act. The city council is prohibited from discussing or taking action on any item that is not listed on the posted agenda. This time is set aside for residents to address the city on matters listed on the consent agenda as well as other items not included on the agenda. If your comments concern an item listed under a public hearing or new business sections of the agenda, please address the council when that item is open for public comment. Please speak into the microphone from the podium, the podium electronically adjusts up and down to accommodate the speaker. Please state your name for the record prior to providing your comments. Please address the council as a whole. If you have documents to present, please provide a minimum of seven copies, these become public record. Please limit your remarks to five minutes. Since council is unable to take action on issues not on the agenda, your matter may be referred to staff for follow-up or placed on a future agenda. The public period is not intended to be a question and answer period or conversations with council or city staff. At this time, does anybody have public comment?
Howdy, I'm Steve Bradford. I'm ashamed, I'm embarrassed by the city, by this council. I'm embarrassed by what I see in the around the town, the homeless living in the conditions that they live in and in our doorways of downtown Wairika. The excrement around town, the blankets, the masks, the I picked up cardboard the other day from all the wind that was blowing from, you know, the blonde tall blonde kid that lives around here. You know, and I took him back to his bed so he'd have a place to sleep on, it's over here at Daryl the attorney's office right here on Fourth Street or on Lane Street. Mercier's office, he sleeps behind there sometimes. And I took him back, you know, picked up all the cardboard all over the floor of the street and on the property that I take care of. Put him back in the corner there, the wind blew him immediately back out, but he was coming back, he saw me put his cardboard back there. And it's not about him because he's not of his own mind. But, you know, they were blowing back all over the town again. I finally picked them up and threw them in the trash. I mean, I've dealt with these people on the property that I take care of right there in that neighborhood. For years now, they've vandalized the property, they've broken two glass doors. Because I chased them off, so they got pissed off and broke the doors. You know, you guys have been trying to fight this thing and I keep trying to tell you that Sacramento, the little pocket of the Communist Party in Sacramento, the Socialist Party, whatever you want to call it, Newsom and his little buddies and Pelosi and those people, they've been ruining our country, our state for many years now. And you refuse to take action in I know it's a tough, it's a tall order. But, you know, I ran for city council and I would have been up against Sacramento consistently because we cannot have their rule of law in our little rural community. It doesn't work. And many counties are trying to fight this. But as a city by ourselves, we can't fight it by ourselves, we have to join with other cities. Our counties have to join with other counties to take this corruption down that the state is impending on all of us. We can't afford the wages that Sacramento dictates for other towns. We can't afford those wages for all of our, you know, city leaders and all this stuff with the pension and everything else. And, you know, I've had the experience and the privilege to work on some of the ranches around here. And when you go out there in those mountains out there and you're out there in all those dirt roads and you see those ranches that have been there forever and how big they are and what it takes to run those, the spirit that these people have and had and what this city used to be. It's embarrassing where the city has come to, it really is. I mean, I'm a man of men, I'm a Vietnam veteran. And I'm embarrassed by, you know, the city leaders, the men, the, you know, it's just embarrassing, you know, and I don't want to leave because I think we are going to turn it around. You know, it doesn't make any sense, I mean, the others, well, I have, I've driven my motorcycle to Montana, Wyoming, Idaho, I've been all over up there in the beautiful countries. And I come back down through 97 over there and I see Mount Shasta and all of the Shasta Valley and everything and I go, I seen it all. And we got it all right here. So I think we need to be more proud of our community and act as like we care and I know you'd care, but you know, we're not cleaning this place up, we don't have the spirit of our forefathers here. In my experience in the 15 years that I've lived here, I've seen this city go down. Not get better, it's gotten worse. I mean, when I moved here, the depression, it almost was. But it was pretty sad, the buildings were pretty closed up on Main, on Minor Street. And we, my wife, Sylvia, she started the art walk just to bring something to the town. And, you know, put some little color in some of those vacant buildings and we put art in those buildings and carry on. Anyway, please act accordingly, have a little respect for our town.
Thank you. Any other public comment at this time? Okay, if there's no public comment, I'll close the public comment section of our meeting, we'll go to consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and non-controversial and will be enacted by one motion unless any member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion. A, approval ratification of payments issued from February 23rd, 2025 through March 22nd, 2025. B, cash balances, budget to actual and fiscal performance reports for January 2025. Cash balances, budget to actual and fiscal performance reports for February 2025. D, quarterly investment report ending in December 31st, 2024. Approval of minutes of the regular meeting held March 18th, 2025. F, adoption of resolution 2025-12 of the city council, the city of Wairika authorizing the city manager execute agreement with Keenan and Associates as the broker of record for city insurance plans. The recommend city council action before use the motion to adopt consent agenda of the city council of the city of Wairika as presented. What is the wishes of the council?
Make a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
I have a motion for Councilman Claire.
I second.
I second, Councilman Davis, I'll do roll call, Councilman Claire.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Councilman Baker.
Yes.
Pro Tim Councilman McCoy.
Yes.
And I, Mayor Middleton, motion passes. Okay, we don't have a public hearing, so city business is our city manager, this is agenda title. Discussion direction of the proposed design and replacing Ringy Pool. Good evening, Mr. Ledbetter.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Wairika City Council, this is Jason Ledbetter, the city manager here for the city of Wairika. So I'm going to go over a very similar presentation that was given at the last meeting. But it's important that we get all the feedback we can, we have a number of folks in the audience tonight, so I'll be curious to see how people feel about this new Ringy Pool design. Before the clerk brings up the presentation, I'm just going to go over the staff memo. So as a reminder here, in 2017, the infrastructure at Ringy Pool failed and the pool was no longer accessible to the public. A facility condition report was drafted in 2018 by a third party that stated that the cost to replace was nearly identical as the cost to fix Ringy Pool. The community and city council engaged public input with multiple community workshops to develop a grant application to replace Ringy Pool. A 2019 grant to the State of California Parks Department was applied for by the city of Wairika but was not chosen for funding by the state. An alternative grant proposal from the community for a different location on Foothill Boulevard was submitted. The project did receive eight and a half million dollars in grant funding in December of 2021 from the California Department or Parks Department. But was sent back to the state after discussion at city council concerning the cost of that project and the concern of not having engineered plans and a cost estimate in order to move forward, which obviously is a critical first step in all publicly funded projects. So at the January 3rd, 2023, Wairika City Council meeting, the Wairika City Council voted to move forward on funding a 95% completion study for preliminary design and engineering of the Ringy Pool complex not to exceed $750,000. After the competitive bid process of a request for proposal commonly referred to as an RFP, Nichols, Melberg, and Rosetto entered into contract with the city of Wairika. The community input from the 2019 grant process was used to guide staff and NMR on the design we will see this evening. So this evening, staff is requesting that the Wairika City Council review the proposed design for replacing Ringy Pool. Take public input from the citizens of Wairika on any alterations that the council deems imperative to be made. Review the cost of those alterations with NMR this evening, or if the alterations require, have them brought back at a future meeting for possible approval, which is where we are in the step process now. This is the second time this has come forward based off of an item that we'll discuss further when the presentation comes up. If the council and public are satisfied, staff is requesting approval of the proposed design in order for NMR to continue forward with a 95% engineered design. At which point, staff will begin seeking funding options with the state and will reach out to our local representatives in order to convey our interest in resolving our current pool closure and our need to provide swimming lessons to our public, exercise options for our public as well as a community engagement location for our public to enjoy. It is important to note that no current funding stream is available to the city of Wairika for the Ringy Pool replacement project. A grant will need to be received in order to bring this project to construction. The priority for the city remains the construction of a new fire hall and bringing paid fire staff to our Wairika Volunteer Fire Department. The Ringy Pool project is continuing forward and will require engaging our local representatives at the state level and tasking them with guiding staff toward the appropriate funding request via grant applications to bring this project to the construction phase. Our assistant city manager has been working with the Economic Development Council on some opportunities for utilizing what is the proper terminology, Juliana, it's tax credits essentially, I believe, correct? So Tanya Douse, the executive director for the Economic Development Council was able to utilize this or help the emergency room project that Fairchild utilized this and they received eight million dollars. We would be able to utilize these opportunities and we're having Cameron Weest look at these opportunities for the fire hall project itself, which we could get up to 25% of that cost, but low and behold, the Ringy Pool project would be also applicable in order to try to go get these tax credits to get some subsidized funding on the project. So we're finding more opportunity where we would look at grants and these tax credits. At the March 4th, Wairika City Council meeting, council member Drake Davis requested a review to separate the one pool design into two distinctly different pools. Staff has reviewed this request and crafted a pros and cons list for council to consider to make a final decision this evening and ultimately, two gentlemen that worked on that are with us tonight on Zoom, we have Justin from the Aquatic Design Group and we have Devin Carter from NMNR. The pros for separating the two pools would be that you could have two distinctly different temperatures in either body of water. You can keep one pool open if maintenance or cleaning were required in the other pool. Two separate pools would also be easy to keep different pool users separate, like adults and kids. The cons to separating these pools would be the requirement to double the mechanical equipment and maintenance of equipment. The mechanical room would require a 50% increase with added construction and maintenance costs, and we'll go over this in the presentation. Tonight, we will review the design and the single request at separating the pool into two pools. We ask for council and public comment. And if we have consensus, we ask for council to consider a motion to finalize the design or instruct staff of proposed changes to be reviewed and brought back to a future meeting. So without further ado, Cindy, if you can pull up that PowerPoint? All right, and so I'm just going to go over tonight, the agenda. Some of the, there's some redundancy in here, but it's really important, we talk about things internally. We talk about things individually with council members and the more we talk about them, the more a narrative comes about and the more we better understand things, the more we discuss them. And so ultimately, I just want to make sure everybody is on the same page when we start this looking at the design. So the agenda for tonight, background information, so the failure in prior grants. What is the current plan? What is the current state of Ringy Pool, if you haven't driven by lately? What is the proposed design? We want to showcase to you that we were looking at this design through the lens of child safety. We worked with the executive director at the YMCA and that's a huge focus for the YMCA and so utilizing some points of interest that he pointed out to us had been implemented into this design. The cost of the proposed design, obviously, we want public and council input. And then if we can, we'll go for an approval of the design or direct staff to make changes for a future meeting. So what is the current plan look like for this project? We are at the starting point, that's in red here, we are on the finalize the design, that's our current step. So we're looking for that public input and council direction, the next step after this would be to actually complete the engineering. Then we would develop annual maintenance costs based off of what type of filtration unit are we going to have, what type of pumps will be there? Are we, you know, we're heating this, how are we generating chlorine with salt water generator or are we doing it the old fashioned way? After we make those determinations, we would be seeking grant funding at that point, we would more than likely reach out to Megan Dally's office. We would look at a budget allocation that was required for the maintenance and operation costs that would hit the general fund. We would want to kind of get all that dialed in to better understand if we could afford that. Then let's imagine we get that grant funding and then we would move forward with construction. So as you can tell, we're at the very start of this phase. Only just kind of trying to finalize our ideal pool and then moving forward, looking for funding. Next slide, please. So what's the background information here? So we had the infrastructure failure in 2017. We had the facility condition assessment, a group came up from Walnut Creek to take a look at the pool. Turns out fixing and replacing were going to be identical cost based off of that document. We had a grant application to fix Ringy Pool, it was not funded based off of, I believe, federal and state requirements over what is considered a low mod area or an area of higher income is what is considered where the pool is currently located and so they did not fund the grant application. That perpetuated into the community and some staff members and some council members going after a secondary grant application in 2021 and moving the location to a low mod area. That ultimately was funded and then was returned based off of the exorbitant cost staff felt like to actually bring that project to fruition were substantially more than what was grant funded. And at the end of 2022 and start of 2023, Wairika City Council then directs staff to fund design where we're at now with the revenue being sold from the sold property that the city owned and has sold to primarily Pfeiffer Norco. We, I also pointed out here on the right hand side, there were 11 public workshops on community needs for fixing, replacing Ringy Pool. It's right about the time I moved to the community, people were coming to my home, knocking on the door, telling me to come down to the park and discuss this. And so ultimately, we utilize that information. Some of the things that came out of those meetings, people wanted to obviously replace the pool, they wanted more ADA and multifunctional use at the pool. They did want a retractable enclosure, unfortunately, we feel that's very cost prohibitive and so we've left that out of the current design. They wanted ADA compliant entrance, modernize the building, add ADA, there was talk of a splash pad. They want the Little League field fences moved so that the Little League can actually have tournaments and be at regulation in order to have those tournaments. They wanted paths and landscaping and then an upgrade of electrical irrigation, lighting, and security infrastructure. Next slide, please. So the city of Wairika currently owns a broken pool, which the public and council have made clear they want fixed rather than abated. Hypothetically, the council and the public can come forward and say, we don't want a pool. At which point, staff will go out and find money to abate the pool and then bring the area to look like the rest of the park at that location. Obviously, that's not the direction, there's been advocating for replacement of the pool. That's why we have moved in the direction we currently moved. The city of Wairika does not have funding to fix Ringy Pool currently. The city of Wairika has commitments that prioritize other projects above Ringy Pool, obviously, the fire hall being the number one project. City staff will be working with our state representative to help engage the state departments for possible grant funding options. The path forward will require a grant, this step will be explored once a firm design is approved by the city council. And this pathway obviously is going to take multiple years. So I just want to be really laying the groundwork for really common sense moving forward so that nobody has an impression that all of a sudden we're going to be standing up a new Ringy Pool next year. Next slide, please. So what is the current state if you are not jogging past this place like I am consistently, or you don't live over in this area and you don't see this? This is essentially what the pool looks like when there hasn't been a giant rainstorm, quite frankly. Next slide. So obviously, in a bad state, unusable. Next slide. Thank you very much. Next slide, please. So now we are at kind of the proposed design, what we currently have, this is from Nichols, Melberg, and Rosetto along with the Aquatic Design Group. Were hired via RFP process for design and engineering. The prior community workshop info was reviewed and implemented as appropriate. And the style of the neighborhood and the post-World War II mid-century design of the existing poolhouse were incorporated into this new design. And so you can see this view, I believe, is from Knapp Street staring at what would be currently the dilapidated building. Next slide. And more of an angled as you first would enter into the parking lot that's utilized if you're ever going to go watch a football game or do a track meet, you're just coming into that parking lot, this is that side angle. And so what we're trying to do here is we're trying to reorient the entrance so that people are parking in the main parking area and we're keeping kids off of Knapp Street. And we have a much nicer entrance on the side that is closest to the actual parking lot. Next slide, please. So just what the design would look like internally here. If we were seated where this gentleman is seated, behind him is the football field. And then we have kind of an L shape here ultimately, so that we are drawing people's attention into the park. And if you're in the park, you're kind of watching what's happening in the pool and then we're shielding the view of the parking lot. Next slide. So one of the features, and we'll go over these features when we get to a schematic, that's an overhead shot. But one of the features that we decided to utilize was this splash area in this very shallow pool that has a walk-in beach access entry on the opposite side that you're currently viewing. And so we decided to implement this because people had advocated that they wanted a splash pad. And so when we went down that, we ventured down that pathway, looking at what a splash pad would look like. Originally, we had a splash pad in the park. And that didn't make a lot of sense for me because I was concerned that there would be graffiti or vandalizing because it was not behind gated area. And so then we thought, let's move it back behind the gate, but then that didn't make a lot of sense because we had a splash pad right next to a pool. And so this was a really wonderful compromise, so this is a part of that shallow pool that is currently connected to the larger pool. And so you can imagine these water features going on where you could easily enter into this area without even utilizing stairs and incorporate some playtime with your child. Next slide. So ultimately, this is just an overhead cartoon of what this would look like. You see two diving boards here, we have the lifeguard stations would be really in the center location there. We do have a lift that would be incorporated, would be mandated that we have an ADA lift. And so just talking to the two gentlemen that are online today from the Aquatic Design Group and NMR. There is a mobile unit that sounds really interesting that we would have a lift that we could actually move in and out from storage and thereby keep, when the pool is closed, we can move that ADA lift inside of the mechanical room and really keep it from deteriorating much quicker. Next slide. So ultimately, so through the lens of child safety, we have single-use external entry-only changing rooms. And so I'm just going to walk over and point those out. So ultimately, if you were a parent with a child and you came into this facility, one of the major differences from the other facilities in Siskiyou County that you would see is that ultimately your child would not be separated from you, there would not be a large changing room space, there would not be a large shower space, everything would be either individualized or left outside. And so you come into the space, you can sit down as a parent, you could watch your child go into a single-person restroom, no one else would be expected to be in that room other than one person. They could then go into a changing room and then they have external showers outside where ultimately, you should only ever be showering in your bathing suit before and after you utilize the pool. And then we would have our lockers adjacent to the showers as well. So everything would be viewed outside, open floor plan in the main building as well, we would have cubicles instead of having individual office spaces. The beach access is another layer of safety where you kind of stop the slip and falls that may happen with kids that are entering into a pool where they're just entering in with the beach access. And then we ultimately have too, you can't see it here, but one of those child safety designs is the ADA parking is pulling people off of Knapp Street, so we have a pull-through that So we have a pull-through that we'll see, I think, on the next slide. And actually at this point, why don't we go ahead and move to that slide, please? So yeah, you can see at the top of the screen, we have a pull-in and that is just to keep kids like to really loiter for some reason outside on the sidewalk, close to the street. And so ultimately we're trying to bring them closer to the building. So it doesn't feel like one of them is just going to dart out in front of Nap Street. There's no drop-off at the curb. You have the ability to kind of drive right in, drop your child off and leave. Or ultimately, if you're going to stay, you can park in the large parking area. Um, and we have, we also have a ramp from the parking area that ultimately you can imagine. Uh, somebody has got multiple children, uh, possibly an infant and they have, um, to cart a lot of things up. They're going to need a walkway instead of stairs. So we offer both stairs and an ADA ramp on that side. Um, it's open entry, eight-lane, 25-yard competition, uh, pool with blocks. That was very important to the X Splash members. And so we reached out to them in order to utilize this facility in the future for swim meets and competitions. Uh, we have the storage room off to the right-hand side next to the parking lot. You would be able to pull in or back in a truck. Right in that location, thereby allowing you to pull off a pallet of chlorine or a pallet of, uh, whatever type of filter, filter we were going to use. Obviously I covered the external, uh, individual bathrooms and changing rooms, outdoor lockers. We would not go with the kitchen with this design. We would do vending instead of utilizing a kitchen. Ultimately seems like the pools that I used to inspect as a health inspector for the county. Um, most of the time the kitchens were no longer compliant and couldn't be utilized, uh, in the fashion that they wanted to utilize them, which then just added to a level of frustration. And then when people would explore what it took to make the improvement, they did not, didn't want to invest the money. And so ultimately to keep the area rather clean, we're advocating for vending. Next slide, please. We're going to, let's come back to this slide when we bring Devin back in. But ultimately you can see currently when you break this up into site work, the building and the pool, we're currently looking at about 12.8 million dollars in today's dollars. Next slide. So we're, let's leave here, let's leave it on this slide and I'll introduce, uh, Justin and Devin to really engage anybody on this particular question or future questions. But we had a question from council member, uh, Davis at the last meeting, and that was to separate the pools. And so on the pros side of that, we have, you know, keep, uh, keep the pool open. If defecating incident transpires, that's ultimately what the concern was, was contamination specifically, whether or not ultimately if someone does defecate into, into a pool. Uh, state law requires you to shut down the, the pool, ultimately clean it out before you're allowed to reopen it. So this allows the location to continue to operate and offer service if one of the pools must be shut for safety, health or maintenance. And then, uh, maintain separation between pool users, children versus adults. And I think also some of the other caveats is that you can have two different temperatures in the two different pools hypothetically, if you wanted to run things that way. Uh, separating the pools on the cons side, the increased construction costs to enlarge the mechanical room and accommodate two separate pools. Uh, the increased operational cost to operate both pools for staffing, utility and maintenance costs. And ultimately it is truly double the cost on what you need because you're going to need two filters. You, the water can't intermingle at any point if you're going to separate the pools. Otherwise you're not actually separating the contamination. You have to separate absolutely everything. And so your filter, um, your chlorine doser, all of that would be, you would need to double that. And so ultimately, why don't we kick it over to the council at this point? Uh, take some public input and then we'll bring Devin and Justin on to answer more questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ledbetter. You want me to go to public first or them first?
Yeah, let's go just really with, uh, the council and then the public and then we'll bring on, um, Devin and Justin as needed.
Great. Okay, we'll go to council with any questions at this time. Okay, Councilman McCoy.
How deep is the diving end?
Yeah, why don't we go ahead and unmute, um, Justin and Devin at this point and.
Devin should be good to go.
You guys there? Devin, Justin?
Are you there, Justin?
Yeah, I am sorry, I'm just pulling up the plans right now so I don't misspeak. If you'd be me about 10 seconds, CAD should open.
Councilman McCoy has a question, he's going to be first up.
Um, so the answer to that is the required depth by California code is 11 foot, 11 and a half feet, 11 feet, six inches for one meter diet, one meter springboards, uh, which wouldn't mean the main drains at the bottom of that section are at 12 feet.
Okay, thank you. And then I'm looking at, um, page 107 of 156 on ours. It's the, uh, overhead view of the facility. And, um, it shows the storage and the pump room. Um, are we going to, are you saying we're going to have to double the size of the pump room? Or just double the size of the pumps by putting in two pumps?
Yeah, I'll, I'll go ahead and answer this. Ultimately we would need, uh, you know, 50% more space in that, in this, in the specifically the pump room, not necessarily the storage area. And so yeah, you can imagine that we need to double the size or nearly double the size in order to fit the rest of the equipment that it would take to split these pools.
Do we have, I mean, I'm looking there, it, could we just double it and then we just take the storage and move it somewhere else?
Yeah, hypothetically we could do that.
Thank you.
Real quick, Justin, can you just touch on one of the, um, difficulties of operating, um, if you've had an incident and what you see in other jurisdictions?
Sure, so, um, operating two separate pools as, uh, was pointed out previously does have pros and cons. Um, the main pro is the temperature differential. Um, the cons are costs, space, um, and the fact that if you do have one pool that it's closed, um, to, in, in order to treat that water, you have to hyperchlorinate or shock the pool, which results in a very strong chlorine smell. Um, there's not thought to be room right now to have a physical barrier between the two pools. So it'd be likely that you'd have to shut the entire facility down, uh, if an incident happened in either body of water, um, due to not only safety, but also the smell.
Thank you very much for that, Justin. That is a great point. So ultimately staff does not recommend splitting the pools. And I think Justin and Devin, when we met on this multiple times, uh, the consensus is, is that larger municipalities that don't have funding issues and service many, many people are getting more into split pools. Um, and then smaller agencies such as ours are, are, they're just not because it's cost prohibitive. And, and I do agree with Justin that if we did have an incident, more than likely the entire facility would get shut down. It wouldn't just be one, one of the, the pools. They're right next to each other. So if you had to drain the main pool, it would be very dangerous to have kids just playing in the shallow area when they could fall 12 feet into, um, an empty pool.
And then, Justin, will you touch on just the, um, kind of timeframe on the cycles? For recycling the water after incident?
Yeah, so apologies for being a little graphic here. Um, if there's a solid stool released in the pool, um, you essentially need to remove said stool from the pool. Uh, increase the chlorine for one, uh, turnover, which in a larger pool would be six hours and the smaller pool would be two hours. If there's a loose stool, um, you need to, again, remove as much as you can of that. Spot treat and shock the pool, uh, for a minimum of three turnovers. And I would recommend four, uh, so that you can see that's a day in the larger pool. And then the better part of a business day on the smaller one.
Thank you.
Any further questions, Councilman McCoy? Yeah, okay. I'll move to my right over here. Councilman Baker?
I don't have any questions at this time.
Okay, Councilman Davis? Any questions? Okay, I don't have any other questions either at this time. I will go to public, um, input or questions at this time regarding Ringy Pool and the proposed, um, plan that's been presented.
It's again, Steve Radford. We just settled this not too long ago. We can't afford it. What's changed? Except for a new councilman, I guess, I think Claire, Councilman Claire ran on trying to open a new pool. But we went, we, we hashed this out for how many months last year? With the grant and we can't afford the grant, the grant's going to cost too much money. We can't keep up with the grant with what it might entail after, you know, the, the pool is made and then we have to, you know, accommodate the grant. I've seen nothing change. You know, the city is not any better off financially. I mean, I'm talking about the community. We don't have any industry here other than government and welfare. That's about it. So until we get a strong, solid industry where people can be proud again, like timber, and maybe that's going to come back now, hopefully. You know, I don't know how the community can afford it. The upkeep was the big issue long ago. You know, when I first moved here, I heard the comments over and over and over again, we can't afford the maintenance. What's going to change? These people, you know, can't afford a box of cereal for their kids right now. Seven, eight bucks for a buck, half empty box of cereal. So I mean, I think this conversation is ridiculous. And, um, the fact that you took our money, that you sold property for this engineering with, instead of fixing the streets or other things, you know? You went above this, the, the people of the city again and just instigated this engineering thing without any, any, was there a hearing? I didn't hear anything about you going to open this conversation again and hire an expensive engineer outfit to come up with this ridiculous eyesore like the county building over here. Right in the neighborhood, you're going to have this gigantic looking space age, you know, building from Sacramento again up here in our neighborhoods. It just doesn't fit. That building, that metropoly over there, the county new building, county, state of California county building. It doesn't say Siskiyou County, it says state of California building. We don't own that, we don't, it's not our building. It's the state of California in our county. No, doesn't work. And that's where I'm talking about, you know, these people, your people are just continually bending over to all of the BS that goes around here. And we can't afford it anymore. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Lorenzo Love. Regardless of whether a new pool gets put in, this site needs to be cleaned up. It almost certainly has asbestos, has fiberglass, possibly has toxic water purification chemicals. This site should have been cleaned up years ago. A grant to clean up toxic sites can be obtained much easier than a grant to build a pool. Get the site cleaned up. And then someday in the future, in the great buy and buy, you may be able to get a grant to build a pool, but it's going to be that much less because the site is already cleaned up.
Any other public comment or questions at this time regarding Ringy Pool? Okay, I'll close public comment. Come back to council. Or Mr. Ledbetter?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to reiterate for council, uh, this evening, we have one modification that, uh, we brought back, which was the splitting of the pools. And so ultimately it sounds like based off of the rest of the public comment, there's an opportunity this evening, uh, to make a determination on whether or not you want to split the pools. Uh, and then possibly make a motion to agree to whatever design, uh, you know, you would like to see, whatever modifications you would like to see or direct staff to make more modifications and bring them back at a future meeting.
Thank you. Well, it doesn't sound like the, based on, um, the cost that is going to be quite a bit more to split the pool. So it doesn't sound like it's going to be feasible to add on like what, quite a bit of money and then it's not going to do any good with the cleaning of the pool if it's, has to be cleaned anyway. So I don't think that's going to work for that change. My opinion. The council members. Uh, Baker?
Uh, thank you. Mr. Ledbetter, I actually like the design as presented, um, at the last discussion that we had. I thought that Councilmember Davis had a good point, but, um, it's obvious to me that we're basically increasing the cost of the operation so much by the two separate pools. So I can't support two separate pools. And again, I like the design as presented this evening. And I appreciate that the design consideration, um, that I understand the direction that was given to, um, the designers was kind of, we wanted to make sure that it fit into the neighborhood. And that's a, you know, um, an older neighborhood. Um, and I just kind of like that it kind of follows that, I don't know, the appropriate term, that 50s design kind of standard. And I also would just like you to remind us of how we got here. I believe that we did have, um, some discussion and agenda items on funding, um, the design phase.
Yeah, let me just go back through my notes. I believe in the PowerPoint, the actual, actually I think it's the staff report. Hold on one second, I think the actual meeting is listed here.
January 3rd, 2023.
Yes, that is right. Thank you, Councilmember, uh, Baker. Yeah, so at the January 3rd, 2023, this was an agendized item. Ultimately, um, it was the unfortunate, um, the end of, of the grant really going back and the idea of that project had come to an end on the new location. And I think there was a big, uh, interest from the public. And I know that the council was getting a lot of feedback from the public at that time that they really did not want to see us get rid of the pool. They wanted to see a solution with a pool in Wyrika. And so this was agendized to basically put $750,000, um, of revenue from sold property as we collected that revenue, putting it into a specialized account to start the process, which we at that point knew would be a very long process, but we wanted to start that process. And so ultimately there was a vote there that it was approved by council to move forward. And that has led us to this point. There was a request for proposal that then ultimately we were given authority to by the, by the city council to move forward on that as well. So there were numerous items that came through the agenda process noted, you know, notice to the public that we were moving in this direction. And ultimately, um, it was a wise decision if you are a supporter of, of fixing the pool because we just needed to start this process ultimately.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Baker. Any other questions or comments? Councilman Davis?
The reason that I suggested that is that several years ago, we used to have a, a Parks and Rec director here. And, uh, he was responsible basically for the maintenance and the care of the pool.
Make sure you speak up in your microphone. Our attorney's been having a hard time hearing you. Yeah, but to speak loudly, he's been having a hard time hearing you, our attorney.
Oh, I apologize. Anyway, oftentimes the problem would occur of defecation in the pool and it would shut them down for a couple of days at least to completely drain it and then to refill it and chlorinate and clean the pool. And, uh, the reason I thought maybe it might be a wise idea to separate those two pools is the cost of, you know, the costs go up, the cost of the water is one issue on ourselves, even though it's city water, still has a cost. So I thought maybe it might be easier. So I thought maybe it might be easier to maintain the pool and it might be less expensive to do that. But I didn't realize that you couldn't use the filter system on both pools. You had to install a complete filter system. So I didn't realize that. So I don't know why, but didn't. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilman Davis. Okay. I think I'll just echo on Councilman Baker that I think we've been through a lot of discussions, workshops and feedback from the public and feedback from this council and the previous councils to move forward with bringing Ringy Pool back. And we're talking probably time, I'm going to be gone from those dioceses by the time the pool probably even gets started. So we're not even talking about two years or three years. We're talking four years and this body is going to be gone by that point. So I don't know what, when it's going to be done, but I hope for the future of Wairika and our kids and our citizens that Ringy Pool is back again. And kids and families are having a good time over in that area. We're not looking at a blithe, older building. And Wairika is an aging community. We're going to have a lot of design standards that are not going to be up to what today's design standards are. It's infill, it's different projects. It happens. The older goes out, the new goes in. I know change is hard, but that's what happens in cities and towns that are aging. The buildings come down, new ones come up and the design is probably not going to be the same. I've witnessed it in bigger cities and other smaller cities as well. So I echo my fellow councilman, Councilman Baker by moving forward the first design and not having the consideration of the modification that Mr. Davis brought forward, but moving forward with the design that was presented. Councilman, comment before we move forward?
Go ahead.
Oh, okay, okay. So you're looking for a direction, Mr. Ledbetter, for tonight to move forward with the design?
Yeah, based off of what I'm hearing, it sounds like a motion to approve the design as submitted here this evening would make sense.
So we, what's the wishes of the council?
This is Councilman, Councilman McCoy, so moved.
I have a motion from Councilman McCoy.
Second.
And a second from Councilman Claire. I'll do roll call. Councilman Claire?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
No.
Councilman Baker?
Yes.
Councilman Pro Tim McCoy?
Yes.
And I am Mayor Middleton, yes. So the motion passes four to one with Drake Davis voting no with the proposal. All right, thank you, Mr. Ledbetter. Is Juliana?
Yeah, this will be the fire severity map.
Okay. So this is the introduction, first reading of an ordinance and does any fire hazard safety zones and amend sections of the municipal code regarding fire hazard safety zone. Good evening.
Thank you, city councilmembers. I am not Fire Chief Jerry Lemus. I am Juliana. Jerry is currently on leave right now, so we will be giving this presentation to you. Our city attorney also worked on this, so he can also give some background on what is being discussed tonight. So today we're doing two items essentially. So first is the introduction of some ordinance changes that are required by the state in reference to the adoption of fire severity maps within the city. And so I'm going to stick to the ordinance update first and then I will move to the fire map update, since the ordinance language is a little bit kind of simpler to move through. And then we can have a little bit more of an in-depth conversation and take public comment related to the fire hazards zones in that process. So essentially what's being asked of the city council by the state of California is that they have updated certain state regulations and codes which require a certain process for adopting fire severity maps. And these fire severity maps are developed by the California Department of Forestry and Fire Protection, commonly known as CAL FIRE. And so this ordinance that's being proposed, that's within your agenda packets, beginning page 111 is the staff report. And then the specific ordinance language is on page 115 of your packets. And so the language that's being proposed follows the state mandated ordinance, model ordinance language. City staff is not recommending any additional language to this state requirement, but really what it does is clarify fire severity zones in chapter 11 of our municipal code, which is buildings and construction. And so this is essentially just adopting those new state standards for moderate, high, very high wildfire severity zones, which did previously exist to this update. But what the biggest updates are is just kind of the designations establishing that they cannot be decreased from what the state is recommending within the adopted map, which we'll talk a little bit about that later. And then clarifies enforcement pieces that would happen. So essentially what you're doing is because we are a local responsibility area or LRA, as you'll see on the map, we are the entity which is to enforce certain aspects of this law going forward. And that is clarified within some of the ordinance updates, specifically on page 118, which is giving the building official the ability to enforce certain building code standards that are required for each zone. And essentially other pieces of code give the fire marshal the ability to enforce certain vegetation management pieces of that. So that's essentially what the updates are for the ordinance is, is that process and some state mandated language. The city attorney, I think, can address any specific questions you have on that. Again, we're not recommending any changes to the state mandated ordinance language. The second piece of this is an adoption of the fire severity map. And so the fire severity map is created by CAL FIRE using topographical and satellite data imagery. They take a look at the slope of different areas within town, the amount of tree canopy coverage, vegetation coverage. And they use that, that to essentially make a recommendation for different zones. And so you have a undefined zone, which means you're good, you're not within any of the fire severity zones, which is typically your more urbanized areas. And so if you'll see on the map that we've provided you with the parcels and the designations on page 120 of your packets, there is a section of town specifically in the center that is not designated as a fire severity zone. And so although CAL FIRE does acknowledge that urban fires do exist and that fire does spread within buildings, for this fire severity zone, it really does overly favor vegetation coverage and different slopes and topography of those various parcels. And so that's how they've essentially determined these types of things. So from there, you have your undetermined area, you have your moderate area, which are areas that are more vegetated, approaching these things, slopes that are around one to five percent. And then you have from there, your high wildfire severity zones or high fire severity zones and your very high fire severity zones. And so you'll see within the map that's been provided to you on page 120, we have had most of those zones expanded within the city limits. So prior to this update, we did not have a lot of very high wildfire severity zones within the city, primarily in the southern portions of the city that were very high before. Now you'll see within the map that a very significant portion of the city is in very high or high wildfire severity zones. And again, that's going back to vegetation grows. And as vegetation grows, it takes up more space and becomes hazard. Also, we've experienced more drought conditions in the state of California generally. So what's happening with your weather patterns right now is that even if you are getting the same amount of precipitation that you have historically gotten, the type of precipitation is changing. So you're not getting as much snow, as we all know, but you're getting these very intense short events where you get a lot of moisture and precipitation. And then it's essentially dry for a very long period of time, where before you had longer periods of less rain. And so that's kind of what's adding to some of this vegetation issue. So right now, when we're getting these very intense weather atmospheric events, you have a very large increase in vegetation growth overall. And then you'll have these very long periods of drought where that vegetation will then die, become very dry and become a very high wildfire severity issue. So most of the state of California has increased in fire severity zone designation. You are not the only jurisdiction that has more area within this map. So essentially what this map does is it designates a fire severity zone for each property within the city. So we have provided you with a map that has the parcel layer on top of it. So you can see that. We can also drill down to a specific address level. So CAL FIRE does offer a map on their website where you can type in your address and it will pop up with exactly what your fire severity zone is, which is going to be really important for what I do on my side of the city. So when you're moving from a non-designated or moderate, there really aren't too many requirements within the moderate area. It's kind of more of like a warning zone for some of the more strict regulations that would be impacted. But essentially, when you're moving from an undesigned zone or moderate zone to a high or very high wildfire severity zone, several things occur when that happens. So first off is our dispense, defensible space requirements increase. And so that's increasing from 30 feet to 100 feet minimum in defensible space that is reviewed for your area. And so that, if you need public resource code specifics, I can give that to you, but that's really boring. So essentially what you're doing is you're looking at what is around each structure on your property. And as a property owner, you are the responsible individual for the property management. Now again, enforcement comes back onto the city for local responsibility areas. And then if you are in an unincorporated county area, you are under a state responsible agency. So that would be CAL FIRE would be your enforcing entity as well as the county building department or building official. And then there are federal responsible areas. That is essentially our tribal nations, our federal land for BLM and National Forest Service, that is under the federal regulations for that. But we'll focus on a local area right now. So your defensible space increases and essentially you have three zones that would be required around each of your homes. First off is within five feet of your primary residence, you would have to essentially eliminate all vegetation except for what we call vertical vegetation. So you are allowed to have branches that extend into this area. You just cannot have branches within 10 feet of a chimney or, or type of smokestack situation around a fireplace, which actually has been in the building and fire codes for a couple of iterations now. So that's a pretty standard practice. But essentially you would have no combustible material within that first five feet, but that also includes fencing, sheds, different pieces like that. And so it requires us in the building side to then enforce higher material standards for those types of structures. And so going back to it, that's the next thing is when you go from moderate and undesigned to high or very high wild, sorry, fire severity, it's not wildfire severity zone anymore. It's a little tick. Most of your building materials go into what they call fire resistant materials or ember resistant materials. And so that includes your roofing, siding, vents, eaves, windows. Again, we can provide very specific sections of the building code that are upgraded when you go into that, that higher standard. But mainly it's, it's getting these different materials that are less flammable. The vents are another big thing too. That's what came out of the Santa Rosa fires is that embers were sucked into vents, into people's attics, starting houses on fire. And so that has made it, made its change into the building code materials. One of the other things that happens is when you're in very high or high wildfire severity zones, you are required to have disclosure requirements for sellers. So if you are selling your home and you are in very high wildfire severity zone, you are required to have that disclosed on the selling documents. That is a civil code, which is super fun. There are insurance implications, as we all know. We are losing insurance, insurance is increasing. And so if you are in a very high or high fire severity zone, your insurance premiums are going to go up. That is the unfortunate reality of this. Again, we've mentioned vegetation management. Another thing too, that would be imposed upon any new subdivisions or even the city itself is that our access requirements change. And so we do need to take a look at our road standards for very high wildfire severity zones to ensure that they're meeting the new state standards. So we have to ensure that there is appropriate ingress egress into neighborhoods, that there are multiple ways out of subdivisions in cases of emergency. And this is coming out of the fires that occurred in Paradise. They unfortunately did not have a significant amount of ingress egress into that community. So now we are seeing changes into the subdivision laws and our requirements for access. Another piece that happens is in high or very high wildfire is your water supply. You may be required to have onsite water supply depending on where you are at in the city or if you have access to municipal water services. We do have some wells within the city and some of our less populated areas. And so you may be required to enhance that onsite water storage or pressure systems for firefighting in some of our remote areas. So if you think about it, if you look at that map, where very high wildfire severity areas are, is typically in the periphery of the city, where we're up against the wildlands or federal responsible areas. Again, ember resistant construction becomes important, window requirements increase. So having tempered glass as opposed to traditional windows is a requirement for very high and high deck requirements, using fire resistant materials for decks and other attached structures. And finally, just fire safe regulations change. So again, road standards, signage. Signage is a big thing that we're going to start seeing being required of cities to enforce. So making sure you have your house number on the curb in front of your house. So you may see us coming by and painting those at some point. Making sure that we have all of the signs upgraded to the correct fonts so that people can easily see them and then they make sense. I think we did fix the one city that had two separate city names on the same street. I think we fixed that one. But anyway, so those are kind of some of the general things for moving one zone to another will do. And so that's why it's important that all departments are involved in this because it impacts all of our work for this piece. And so I will hand it over to the city attorney if he has anything else to add.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Andrew Jared, city attorney. What you're being asked to do tonight is to comply with state law. There is nothing that's being asked of you that expands the fire hazard severity zones. Under state law, you have the right and the ability to, to move moderate to high, to move high to very high. But you are not being asked to do that. There is a process for doing it and that process is being used for a different purpose tonight to amend the map, but it is not being used to increase the the designation layout that has been identified by the state fire marshal. The map that's presented to you is the same in color and shape as what was presented by the state fire marshal. But as Juliana mentioned, it has overlaid on it, the parcel map. And that is to aid in the ability for the public and for staff to see which zone applies on a parcel. As Juliana mentioned, there is a database. However, that database is not adopted. What's required of you is to adopt the map. And so this is an oddity of the legislature's the code that they adopted and the way that they stated it, it's that you have to adopt the map. And then they present the map. Well, they didn't present the, the data behind the map. So we're adopting the map and we're adopting the we're putting the lot, the layer on of lot lines on top of that map. So it's easy for everyone to see. The other change that's being made through the ordinance is updating your city code. As was mentioned, your city code is currently outdated and frankly unlawful. The way that it states, your code states that you are designating these zones. What it says is the, the fire chief designates these zones. State law now says it's the city council that adopts the zones through an ordinance process. So the ordinance you'll adopt tonight will do two things. It will comply with state law. It will also change your city code to make it consistent with state law, the, the text of it. Your, another issue that arose in looking at the map was because of the imprecision, well, I won't say imprecision, as Juliana mentioned, the, the colors on the map are derived by the state by looking at topographic features, not looking at land use features, not looking at lot lines. And so there are a number of lots that have more than one color running through the lot. And so to avoid confusion for residents, to avoid sometimes staff applying a lesser, sometimes staff applying a higher zone, what's being presented to you is a code amendment to say if there is more than one designation shown to say if there is more than one designation shown on one lot, the higher designation shall apply for the entire lot. And that is allowed under the state code to facilitate uniform and necessary application of the law in your particular area for firefighting purposes. So with that, I don't think I have anything else to add. There is information provided in in your packet talking about the insurance aspect. So nothing that you're doing tonight changes the insurance aspect. Although I don't think that it's debatable that insurance is going up throughout the state. But it is, the final attachment in your packet is material from the state insurance commissioner basically articulating that the map that's before you is not what's going to drive your insurance up. That's it's it's kind of a concurrent with other factors going on. So we shouldn't be taking the heat for driving insurance rates here. That's that's independent by the insurance companies. Nevertheless, anything you're doing tonight is not increasing something that isn't already being put upon you by the state that you have to do. Other than putting on the lot lines and clarifying that when there's multiple zones on one lot, the higher zone applies.
You echo that. I did request information from our local CAL FIRE unit and the fuels management unit does operate under the same practice. Where if there are multiple zones on a property in state responsible area, they take the highest zone as the applied conditions for that property. Unless that property owner, I believe there is a ability to protest that within CAL FIRE, but I did not get that process for it. And it only applies for those who have over fifty acres of land. In one contiguous parcel.
Right?
All right. Thank you so much. So open up to council for questions. Councilman Baker.
I, I have a few questions and on page one sixteen, in the middle of the page, the whereas, this is the language that changes that mentions amendments to the Wairika City Code. And the very last sentence, I'm just curious where it mentions and certify that a new occupied structure or rebuilding of an existing occupied structure complies with all applicable state and local building codes. And I'm just wondering what that, I'm curious about what the standard is for rebuilding.
Right. So the the reason why those statements are are made there in that preamble statement, whereas the changes proposed in the map and its interpretation through amendments to chapter eleven point ten. That's the the preamble statement you're you're talking about?
I I think, and and correct me if I'm wrong, Councilwoman Baker, I believe you're asking about if it's a legally existing structure and it
If I could, if I could, I'll I'll take this one. Because I just want to make sure we're talking about the right recital. The changes proposed to the map and its interpretation through the amendments to chapter eleven point ten, is that correct?
Oh, oh, you're asking for which section?
Yeah, I believe that's the whereas and then specifically the very last.
And then the last phrase in that is and certify that the new occupied structure or rebuilding of an existing occupied structure complies with all applicable state and local building codes?
Yes.
That's what you're asking about?
Yes.
Okay, so that is not, that shouldn't be taken and read on its own. That phrase at the end is one of the things that need to be achieved through the fire codes in general. And so when we, it's basically a list here. In the one, two, three, in the fourth line down, there's a colon. And then from maintain defensible space, remove portions of a tree, maintain a tree or shrub, maintain the roof and certify that new occupied structures, those are all concerns that need to be met in order and the reasons why the code amendment is being done. And and so that, we have to make this finding that those things are necessary and will be achieved because we're doing this code amendment. That's all this is saying. We're not by this code amendment doing anything more than is already going to be done through certifying that structures comply with state and local building codes.
And I think maybe going to, as I understood it, Councilwoman Baker, you're asking about rebuilding process and policies?
Yes. So if, as an example, and you know, if this is a discussion that I should have with you on another day, let's have it. But somebody puts a new roof on their house. Under our permits now, you have to get a roof permit. But then do they have to, do the property owners currently have to be concerned about defensible space? Is that something that you look at under the roofing permit currently?
Sure. So there's a, I I think to better put this, and I can definitely prepare something for the next meeting as well to walk you through those specifics because I think it's a very important thing for people to generally know about. So it kind of depends. So as we kind of know, we have like several different layers of regulation. We get to have fun with and understand all of the implications of public resource code versus the government code versus the building code. But essentially, so if someone were to come in that circumstance and and ask for a re-roof, we would only process the re-roof application that's required. Now, it's an interesting thing that you bring that up. So with the very high and high wildfire now, what we'll do is we'll check if they're in one of those two designations, they will be held to a higher standard than someone in moderate or undis or or not defined. And so it is our, it is, the onerous is put on the building department to go, actually, this is what you're going to be required to do. We actually just issued a memo on new re-roofing for our roofing contractors and general contractors. And so actually, there are going to be some pretty significant changes generally to re-roofing within the city just based off of new building codes and fire codes for fire safety and energy efficiency. But essentially, when we're on the property, looking at an inspection of a re-roof, we're focused on that re-roof portion. Now, at the same time though, we also do have programs that are looking at vegetation management. And so if you are in very high fire severity zone, you are required to do defensible space. And so you can request inspections from CAL FIRE or the city of Wairika to do those. We're, you know, it's a good time to start getting paid fire staff to help us do those types of inspections. But again, the enforcement piece would be be back on the city and in collaboration with CAL FIRE just because of resources for our particular situation. So in terms of like, we would not deny a re-roof permit if you're not meeting those vegetation management requirements. But you are still, those apply, those laws still apply to you in that circumstance. So at some point, the fire, state fire marshal, the fire chief could come by code enforcement. We do vegetation management all the time, could come in and state you are not in compliance with the defensible space code. Here is the remedy for that. So it's kind of two separate things in our world, but it it is still under our umbrella of enforcement and compliance. If that makes a little bit of sense.
It, you know, it does. And you know, I know that we have to do this.
Yeah.
But I'm really concerned about the increased cost to property owners to comply with the defensible space. I'm concerned about increased work for the city of Wairika, more responsibility. Certainly, fire suppressive building supplies and materials are, my guess, going to be more expensive than what's currently being used. And I know, I trust that the city is going to be working on an implementation plan when all of this this passes. I hope that we're going to be gentle with property owners. I'm hoping that there will be grants that will be available to help people. And I know that we have a resiliency officer. I'm assuming that they would be looking at this as well. I just am hoping and suggesting that the county, the county, the city make implementation of these new requirements as easy as possible on the property owners, the affected property owners. Removing trees is expensive, et cetera. So I know that kind of drifted from a question into a a comment in my opinion, but that's where I'm coming from.
Yeah. And through the chair, what I can do for the second reading of this ordinance is we can bring you a more comprehensive guide to how we're addressing implementation because we are. So thank you. We we do echo the concern. There's a lot that is changing for it and it's an ever evolving thing. But if it pleases the council at your next meeting, when you see hear this ordinance, we'll bring you some of the implementation that we have planned as well as other resources for the general public. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Baker. Just to kind of fill you in in my career, this isn't my career here. I have another career outside of this diocese and council chambers is that sellers are being asked now with disclosure, Ms. Baker, that we, when we give them disclosures, that they have to be in compliance with the CAL FIRE, the defensible space. So when someone sells a home, they have to be in compliance if they're not. They have to call out somebody to do that before that home is transferred. And insurance is, insurance company is already inspecting through town before renewals if they're not in compliance. So a lot of my sellers are now getting in compliance because when they sell, they have to be in compliance with CAL FIRE and the defensible space. So they're already getting hit before they even come into the city to be in compliance before they even transfer ownership of their house. So it's already been going on for a while and it's been has been costly to some sellers, but the next owner can't get insurance if they don't do it. So it's really, it's really hard. It's hard in my career and hard for the homeowner and everybody in our county and our city. But it's, so it has been been done, being done for a while that they had to be in compliance. So not that it makes that any better. But anyways, that's what I share that. Okay. Any other questions or comments before I go to the citizens? Councilman Davis?
When, if we pass this, am I asking Juliana?
Okay. I don't know if it's for Juliana or the attorney.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
If, when we pass this, it's mandated by the state, am I correct?
Correct.
So when we pass it, does that mean that we will have local inspectors? Or is CAL FIRE coming in to do the inspections if they're asked? Or is our Wairika Fire Department going to do it?
That is a very good question. We do not have a rollout for the inspections at this point. We would probably rely on our local CAL FIRE unit as it sits right now with the current weather. Granted, you can't do a lot of the inspections right now because you don't have the understory vegetation in in a full array. But what we are doing is we are doing our own properties right now with CAL FIRE to get better at learning what they're looking at so that we will have a local staff trained at some point. I do not have an interim plan for you off the top of my head right now. But eventually, yes, we will have local inspectors through our fire department, code enforcement, and potentially even our building official as well, depending on, you know, what availability he has to do that. But we will eventually in the long term have local inspectors in addition to CAL FIRE. But I believe we have not solidified what the interim inspections are at this point.
Yeah, there's all sorts of situations that come to mind. Like, for example, there's a great big shade tree on the edge of your property for the afternoon sun, but it's fairly close to your house. What are we doing with that, baby? Are we taking it down? Are we living it up? Or what are we doing?
So yeah, I can actually address that. So with the different defensible space areas, green is good. So they do allow for vegetation and they talk about different vertical and horizontal vegetation. So your shrubs or anything low lying is considered horizontal, your trees are your vertical. And so if the vegetation is in good condition, it can stay. There are some requirements in terms of limbing for trees and spacing for shrubbery that is required under this, but it does allow for the continuation of vegetation. It it's a really interesting aspect. I just went down to Sacramento for a training where they were talking about shade as the next utility for extreme heat mitigation. And of course, you know, we get shade from trees, which also happen to start on fire. So we always, within the planning world, we have to balance all of those pieces. But yes, you will be allowed to still keep trees, but they will have to be in good condition. And we have kind of thought about that. As I said before, we are working on Green Horn Reservoir as kind of a mock project to show what's called a mosaic pattern of vegetation management. So we will be doing, we'll be bringing that to you guys to show off what CAL FIRE and Sarah, our resilience planner, has been working on. Hopefully here in the next couple of meetings. But we're hoping to have kind of mock environments for people to see what compliance looks like in different areas. And so we'll have low lying grass area compliance, we'll have more timber management type of compliance areas for people to take a look at and be able to visualize what needs to be done and what is appropriate and not appropriate. Unfortunately for us, the various tree species that we have here can be susceptible to root funguses which end up killing it and drought exacerbates that issue. Additionally to that, we also have beetle kill that's occurring right now. And so when there are droughts and it stresses out the tree, it's not able to fight off beetle or or bug issues leading to dead and dying trees. So you'll start seeing more dead and dying trees most likely than you will shade trees. Nice trees that are in good condition. So that's just a different biological issue we can talk about later.
Green Horn Park is getting addressed somewhat right now and it looks very nice.
Yeah. And we will be bringing you more plans in the future to kind of showcase what we're doing.
Thank you, Councilman Davis. Okay. I'll go to public comment. Thank you, Juliana. Public comment, questions?
Steve Bradford, I think what we what we learned during COVID is a mandate is not a law. And I'm all again, I'm all for protecting our city and, you know, I have a metal roof on my house. I would suggest that to anybody, or there are fire rated shingles. I think as a community, we could step up and do that ourselves. We don't need a state coming in here and trying to mandate something. But a mandate is not a law. It's just a suggestion. We learned that during COVID. That all those mandates came down weren't really, didn't have legal standing because it didn't go through the Senate or Congress. The other thing about the pool, I'm I'm all in favor of pool, believe me. I'm, whatever makes this community better, I'm for it. But if we can't afford it, then let's, you know, be honest with ourselves. Thank you.
Any questions, comments regarding the fire mapping and the, what's on the agenda? Okay, another public comment. We'll go back to council. Okay, the recommend city council action before you use the one, consider a fire hazard severity zone map and recommendation by the state fire marshal amended to include parcel data, attachment one dash B, two, and introduce and wave the fool. Reading of the ordinance by the state fire marshal and amend chapter eleven dot ten, the Reich Municipal Code attachment one dash A, three, read the following ordinance by title only. An order that the city council of the city of Wairika, California, adopting the fire hazard severity map zone map amending title eleven, chapter eleven point one zero, as fire hazard severity zones. By title only. Thank you. What are the wishes of the council?
I second it.
There was no first, so.
No, all firsts.
I have a, I have a motion from I have a, I have a motion from Councilman, um, Claire. I will second the motion. I'll go for roll call. Councilman Claire?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Baker?
Yes.
Councilman Pro Tim McCoy?
Yes.
Mayor Middleton, yes. Motion passes five to zero. Okay. And I've had two requests for us to take a 10 minute break, so I will do a 10 minute break at the clock for the city council. Clock says eight oh one. So we'll come back about, um, we'll say eight fifteen because it takes longer. Eight fifteen. Okay, we'll re-adjourn the regular city council meeting. Times eight thirteen? It is on. Can you hear me now? Okay. So this is, uh. Item number C, Mr. Labetter.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Wairika City Council. So we have just a really brief staff report for this item. And it really is just to showcase that at the March eighteenth.
I'm sorry, I saw C. I'm sorry. Okay, is that the right one? I'm sorry, I was off my, did I give the right?
Yeah, we're on item eleven C. And so, uh, basically what happened at the last meeting. At the March eighteenth, twenty twenty five, Wairika City Council meeting, a motion was made by Councilwoman. Uh, Baker and seconded by Mayor Middleton to continue this item to the April first, Wairika City Council meeting. And so ultimately, if you then move to page one fifty five, you will see the staff report from the March eighteenth meeting. And, uh, you guys are to basically pick this item back up where you left off at that meeting. And this, this item is from Mayor Pro Tim Paul McCoy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labetter. All right. And I believe at this time we do have to ask, um, Councilman Davis to go, um. Sit in the audience and vacate the diocese at this time. Thank you, Councilman Davis. Okay, so we are. As Mr. Labetter said, we, um. Tabled the meeting from March eighteenth discussion, possible action as discussion to government code. Three, six, five, one, three, and possible violations by Councilman member Drake Davis and whether he. A vacancy has occurred on the Wairika City Council. So here we are again discussing the matter. I don't know where you want to start off. If you want to start off, Mr., uh, Jared, or if you want us to start off, any one of us at the council?
Oh, wherever, um, you would like, you left off with deliberating on the question. Um, and I think that's where you. Um, are supposed to pick back up.
Okay. Any comments or questions? Anybody wants to start off from our last meeting? No, uh, Councilman Claire?
So just correct me if I'm wrong. If I'm allowed at this time to comment on my thoughts on this whole matter. Basically, on how I feel one way or the other. Is that correct? Just want to make sure I'm not misusing my time.
Let me use your time. That was on the item regarding three, six, five, one, three and the law and possible violation and, um.
So, um, we all probably have a notice. I haven't talked very much since I've been up here, so, uh, bear with me a little bit here. So what I've handed out and what I'm referring to is the Attorney General's opinion. Uh, this is going to be. Um, David Marquez versus the city of Moreno Valley. This, again, this is the attorney, Attorney General's opinion. This is not my opinion. Uh, this is something that goes along similar to our city council. There is some differences. I'll go over those with you in here. I won't read this whole thing. It'll be very boring, but I'll just hit the points on it. Okay? So the background of this case begins with, um, Moreno Valley is a five member city council and it consists of a mayor. Four city council members elected by the voters districts they represent. Obviously, we don't really have districts here. We're just one, one city. Uh, Dave Marquez is a resident in Moreno Valley and was elected to serve a four year terms at District three council member. City alleges that Marquez forfeited his seat on the council under the terms of the government code section three, six, five, one, three, B. Because Marquez was absent without permission from the city council's meetings for more than seventy consecutive days between June, Sep. June and September of twenty twenty second. Marquez responds that his absence should qualify as excused under government code section three, six, five, one, three, B for legitimate reasons. And I apologize if I'm reading too fast. If you all would like, I could go over the government code sections again, uh, as far as A and B. If so, please let me know. I have them. I think we all said it enough that we all remember them pretty good. Uh, but basically I'll just say, uh, thirty six, five, one, three, A is absent without permission from all regular city council meetings. For sixty consecutive days. And B, notwithstanding subdivision A, a city council member is absent without permission from all regular city council meetings for seventy days consecutively. So that's the condensed version. Goes on to say Moreno Valley City Council Resolution two thousand fifteen dash seventy one. States regular meetings of city council for the first and third Tuesdays of each month, similar to us. There's no dispute that Marquez attended regular city council meetings on June twenty first of twenty twenty two. And next attended a city council meeting on September twentieth of twenty twenty two. Number of days between Marquez meetings he attended was actually ninety one. Which obviously affects the A and B argument. Although Marquez does not dispute the minutes, he argues that he should have been had excuse due to multiple issues. One, he had a childcare issue. And next is because he tested positive for COVID. The Attorney General's opinion goes on to say, as described above, government code section three, six, five, one, three applies to a council member who is absent without permission. Government code section three, six, five, one, three does not define the meaning of the phrase absent without permission. Nor does the case law or Moreno Valley's municipal code. It goes on to say, in the, in, in ending. We think this matter raises substantial questions of law and fact to whether Marquez vacated his council seat. Under the government code section three, six, five, one, three, B. For example, does a city have a policy for excusing absences? If a policy exists, is it communicated to council members? Is childcare illness a valid excuse for city, for the city council member's absence from a meeting? If so, how and when must the exercise be proffered? Does the city council have discretion to accept or deny a particular excuse for the council member's absence? Pardon me. City council have discretion to accept or deny the particular excuse. For absence and must the city council pass a formal motion to excuse a particular city council member's absence? For the excuse to be valid and the absence therefore permitted under government code section three, six, five, one, three. Closing, just a couple of things I have on this whole matter. Again, this is the Attorney General's opinion, not the opinion of Councilmember James Claire. This is something I found. It was, you guys can have options looking at it. It is on the dot gov site. I need to reference it. It is actually, uh, number twenty two dash one, zero, zero, two. Again, I'd like to say that this is not exactly Wairika Siski County. Obviously there is differences. Um, how the votes were done, the stories are different, the situation's different. But some of the things we have taken into consideration, I think. When going forward with this idea. Since one, we did have a canceled meeting, if I remember correctly, uh, with Councilmember Davis's, one of his absences. However, since one of the biweekly regular meetings was canceled, the council member could not have been absent from that meeting. And it simply did not occur. Thus, Councilman Davis was not absent from all regular meetings during a sixty day period. And government code section thirty six, five, one, three, A does not apply. Secondly, in the Moreno Valley case, the AG did not say removal was automatic. Instead, the AG said substantial questions of law and fact exist as to whether council member was absent without permission. During council members Davis's absence, there was a canceled meeting. There's no policy on absences currently. And the council member did not willfully abandon his office. In the absence of local policy defining when and how permission for absence is granted or withheld. Presumption should weigh against forfeiture, especially when the councilman did not, Councilman Davis did not abandon his office. This situation, although it's difficult, obviously, we're kind of all stuck in a rut here. In this situation, the public interest of Wairika lies in maintaining stable local government. Which favors continuity where the absence does not reflect neglect. Councilman Davis has since presumed precipitation, participation, sorry. The last little thing I have to say is, we do not have a policy in place as far as absences and how they're granted and how they are not. Um, I, when I was brought on, I was not instructed how to call in sick or what I was supposed to do. And I'm not blaming anybody for that. We need to update our code of conduct and our policies, obviously, to address these things for the future. The council member, if, if council member is going to go on a pre-planned vacation, what kind of steps are, are they to follow? How not, how far of a notification do they need to give? All that stuff is never covered. Government code section thirty six, five, one, three, A and B. Are very specific when they mention absent without permission and regular meetings. Councilman Davis did attend a special meeting, but we know that that does not qualify under that government, government code section. It's only regular meetings. So that does not apply. However, absent without permission is not defined anything that we have. We cannot punish him or anybody for that matter, under the guise of government code, for, for the purpose of removal, pardon me. For the purpose of removal of a council member by vacating his or her seat under government code section thirty six, five, one, three. A policy and procedure needsably implemented to use this code as a basis of removal. Therefore, since we do not have something in place to, for an absences to, or an explanation of with or without permission. It would not be fair to move any council member until we have something in place, our policies updated, which I would recommend we do moving forward. And I think that's all I have. So in the closing, I do not see removal of Drake Davis as. What we need to do here. And I don't think he vacated his seat.
Thank you, Councilman Claire. Okay. Do you guys want to go? You want me to go first? I'm ready. I'll go first. Uh, I'll go. So in thinking about this, this is. Thank you for bringing this to our attention. So this is the problem I have. Is. This section three, six, five, one, three was brought to our attention by our city attorney, Mr., um. Mr. Jared, who's online right now. Council McCoy missed a, um, or had a, um, now it's all out there public. He had a massive heart attack. Was transferred by ambulance or airlifted. I, I'm not sure. I didn't get into his personal business. Um, to the hospital and then was transferred to another hospital for a very serious heart condition. I was contacted by our attorney before I made the announcement because there was rumors going around by Mr. McCoy. That, um, that I had to make the announcement. If I was going to make the announcement that Mr. McCoy suggested. Why he was absent, why he wasn't sitting here. There was rumors going around town about his health. And before, um, the meeting, I was directed by our attorney who wasn't asked at that time. But contacted me and said, before you announce, you know, make the announcement regarding Paul. Something else has become for the agenda for him to be approved to miss further dates. He's already missed so many dates. Next week or next meeting, he's sixty days in violation of code three, six, five, one, three. No one knew about the law, but he took it upon himself to bring the law up to me, contacted me. And forced me pretty much to say, I needed to do this. His seat was automatically vacated. And so that came up from the attorney saying I needed to do this, that it was the law. If he missed anymore. You know, without permission, he was laying in the hospital. We had to grant him the permission. That had to be done. So that's how this was all brought up. Mr. Davis was in attendance when this was all brought up and knew the law. So Mr. Davis, um, was sitting in when this was read for Mr. McCoy, read from our attorney. We voted for Mr. McCoy, giving him the ample time to come back and fill his seat before his vacated. He came back before his sixty days. He did not miss that period. He came back. Before that was up. But we did it just as courtesy because there was an unknown. During that time, Mr. Davis did miss the meetings. He did attend one special meeting. That doesn't count. And then we did have a council meeting, um, council in, um, November, which would have been the sixty days. Now, according to my research. Because our council does meet twice a month. And it's already on the agenda. That A does apply that the seat has been vacated. That's the information I'm reading, the information I have heard from other attorneys. That there was a violation that he vacated a seat. I haven't heard whether we have a policy or not, that we still. Are up to violate or just ignore California state law because it's not in our policy. So I don't know that or not. I guess our attorney would have to advise us if we can violate the law. And just because we don't have that in the, you know, we follow Rosenbergs, which he told us we need to follow. We changed certain rules, so I don't know if there's a law we changed. I've read where this law cannot be changed. He automatically vacates a seat. But we've been given two different opinions. So that's my concern. I want to laid out the facts of like, what, uh, what, um, applied to Councilman McCoy. Applies to Councilman Davis. What our city must follow. We meet twice a month. This is, um, doesn't matter if you cancel a meeting that was agendized, that meeting he missed, so a sixty three days. But we've been given all these different scenarios and what's good for this council member is, you know. But no, it's okay for this one. So that's the problem I have. If it's the law, you know, that he violated. And it says he's not making it vacated. We don't decide. The law decides that. And then I've read where we can be in violation of the law if we allow it, if that's the case. And I'm just not willing to take that risk without. Whether Mr. Jared or Mr. Jared's firm coming up and saying, you know, this is how it is. So that's what I'm comfortable with. I don't want to remove anybody, but if the law is the law and states it, but we need to have an attorney who is. Going to really guide us on facts on both cases. And move forward because of distraction. I want to move on with the work of the city. I don't want to see Mr., um, Davis go. But if that's the law. And that's how it is, we need some really good legal advice. So we're all protected. He's protected. And that's how I feel moving forward. So that's where it's been confusing for me. It's been all these different scenarios and different rules for this person, this person. So that's where I'm having a hard time. All right, that's it. Councilman Baker?
Thank you. Um, Councilmember, um, Claire, I appreciate you providing a copy of this AG's opinion. For us, um, so that we have it in front of us. Um, I have a lot of concerns that I'd like to just put out on the floor tonight. I'm concerned that we have a city attorney that we pay. The city have attorney has given us his legal opinion. That the seventy day rule applies in this case. Because of the canceled meeting. I'm concerned that there are council members that are going to outside legal sources to get information. I'm just not sure. I don't remember giving that approval for council members to be doing that. So that is a real concern to me. I, um. Absolutely. This is what I want to say. Um, I reviewed, um, I went back and I listened to the, um. Last meeting, I watched it on YouTube and there was a statement that was made. That, you know, we're a nation of laws and that we have to follow the law. Well, I'd like to address what I think is an absolute elephant in the room. Is that this council itself adopted a law regarding, um, the banning of camping. In the city limits of Wairika. And as we decided based on, um. Compassion for homeless people who are camping, that we would waive the implementation of that ordinance. the implementation of that ordinance because the weather was bad, because project base camp had not opened, and there would be no place for these people to go. Um, so in one situation, we have compassion, we have understanding, we are using common sense. In this situation, Mr. Davis has explained that he missed a meeting because he was ill. And he discussed that at the special meeting that Mr. Davis, um, Mr. Middleton and I attended. So I think that it was very clear that it's reasonable to me that the three of us knew, or the two of us knew, that Mr. Davis had been ill. Um, and I think that it, we owe it to our council member, our fellow council member, Mr. Davis, to be as compassionate to him as we are with the homeless and, um, the situation of implementing the, um, ordinance, um, regarding the ban on camping. And, you know, I could take it even further. If you go back to our nation since 2020, there have been a lot of laws that have been overlooked and, um, compromised, including, um, violent protesting, burning of businesses, damaging historical statues, looting, um, and people have not been held accountable for those actions based on the political climate of the country. And I disagree with this action. I don't believe that Mr. Davis has violated this code section, and I think that we need to move past this and get on with the business of the city. And, um, I would like to make a motion for consideration that we retroactively, um, grant good cause absent just to, uh, Councilmember Davis retroactive to my research shows that he was absent on October fifteenth, um, so that we, um, retroactively, um, state that he had good cause for missing that meeting, um, based on, um, medical conditions.
If I may just have you repeat the, the last portion, which meeting date, so we can get a
Um, that, again, because we've never been provided with, um, a, uh, an actual timeframe, so I had to do this based on minute myself, um, based on, um, his absence on October fifteenth.
It is on your agenda, Mr. Baker.
So that's my motion.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Baker. And for the record, no one ever said that I went out and, uh, was seeking, um, legal advice, just like Mr. Claire provided with this. There's a lot of stuff on the internet, so I don't like the accusation that I went out and was seeking legal advice. There's a lot of stuff. No, I said I read from attorneys, saw from attorneys. There's a lot of people on YouTube. I did not hear, did not seek anybody, any legal advice outside Mr. Jared. Just like he provided this, I went on YouTube. If you want me to send you the YouTube videos, I can. I'll share those with you.
Well, if you're using those to make a decision, maybe they could be provided.
Is he making this?
All of the
Okay, well, I will. He made that. I will send the videos to you.
Thank you.
They're YouTube. They're all over. You Google it. Very easy. Okay. Mr. McCoy?
I'm gonna think we got off subject last week when we talked about, or two weeks ago, we talked about my medical condition. Uh, the attorney spent more time on that than, uh, talking about the law. Um, so, um, I agree with a count, with the council, uh, member that, uh, none of these council members should be going out to an outside attorney. Um, uh, and I, but I haven't seen it yet, uh, other than I, people talking to our current attorney. Um, I don't talk to him because he's never returned my calls from the first, uh, first, uh, two or three months he was on. Um, um, we can compare this to the camping ordinance. Uh, you, Madam Councilwoman, uh, were one of the ones that decided to wait. Uh, I did not vote for the camping ordinance because I thought it was stupid. I think it's stupid to have a law that you're not going to enforce. I think it's just plain stupid. So please don't, don't include me in that. You're, it's, that's, that's between you and your other council members. Um, we've gotten two different stories from our city attorney. Um, one was for, uh, Mr. McCoy and one was for Mr. Davis. I am not sure why I was targeted for medical condition when Mr. Davis was on two vacations, but he was not targeted by the city attorney to file, um, to be able to be gone. Um, I look, I, I appreciate that, uh, Mr. Claire has brought us this. Um, you can also look online and find Bell Gardens and several others that, uh, are similar cases but have different outcomes. Um, when I called, I know you work for the Mr., with, so we can be totally, uh, upfront, uh, Mr. Claire, you work for the DA's office, right? You're an investigator? Yes?
Yeah.
Okay. So when I called the DA's office at the behest of somebody at the state level in Sacramento, uh, they told me to call the DA. I never got it. It doesn't have anything to do with him, but I just want to make sure that we know that there may be a conflict of interest there as well. I never got a You have something you want to say?
No, no speaking, no, no speaking, point of order, no speaking from the audience. Continue, Mr. McCoy.
That, um, that, uh, the DA's office, uh, specifically one attorney, which I, who I won't mention here, never returned my call. And that's, I was told to call the DA's office. So I appreciate that Mr. Claire brought this in. Um, Councilman Davis did make a special meeting. My understanding is, because I wasn't here, uh, as he came, he told the, uh, mayor and Mr. Davis or Mr., um, uh, Middleton, can correct me if I'm wrong. He said, I'm, I'm not coming to the meeting. I'm, I'm going home for whatever, for felt, I don't know what it is. I'm not going to get into health because I've been, uh, told that I'm going to be sued if I say something about anybody's health in here. I haven't said anything about anybody's health, even though other people have asked me about what my health is and why I do, what, you know, why I was gone. It's none of your business. It's not anybody else's business. But I mean, I know that Mr. Davis was on vacation during that time. Um, I don't necessarily want to see Mr. Davis go either, but we need to follow, we need to follow the laws that we're set up to follow. Otherwise, we're no better than anybody else. We're just like everybody else that comes in and says, can you do this for me? Can you do that for me? No, we can't. It's a city. Um, we need an attorney. We, we, Mr., uh, Claire asked for a code of conduct. Yeah. We asked for a code of conduct back in November of twenty-twenty-three. The attorney has not been able to get it to us. He's not been able to get it done. Yes, we pay well over $200,000 a year. I don't disagree with you. But we need to get somebody who can be responsible to the five of us. I mean, is, is there anybody in this council that think that, that thinks that it's good that we've been waiting since November of twenty-twenty-three to have a code of conduct that we already have written? Um, we need an attorney that's going to not change their mind and say one thing to one person, one council member, one thing to another council member. We need somebody that's going to give us a written report. Um, we asked for, uh, for more exploration on this before we talked about it. I would like to see more exploration on it. I didn't need to be on tonight. I, I'm appreciative of when we talked about it, but we've gotten, we've got nothing. We've got nothing written from our attorney. Nothing at all. So, um, you know, in closing, um, you know, I, I, you know, I, I'm sorry that we're going through this, and I get lots of people that tell me, oh, we just need to do the, the business of, of the city. We're doing the business of the city right now. That, that's what we're trying to get done. We've got a fire hall to build. We've got, we're, we're working on a swimming pool. We've got potholes to fill. We've got all kinds of other stuff that's going to start here in three or four weeks. Um, we're not going to drop it just because we have an attorney looking into something, but we need an attorney, whether it's from this firm, CHW, or whether it's from a new firm that can give us a, a written statement on, on the facts of this case. So, and we are, again, remember, we are, we meet two times a month, so we are under one. We are not under two. Two says specifically that for those, uh, councils or government agencies that meet one time a month or less. So we need to look at that. We need to look at the law. And then we need, if we're going to bring Mr. Davis back, we need to make sure that we are all covered. We, I mean, I don't think any of you want to be sued by somebody within the community because I have people calling me on both. I, I'm getting calls on both sides of the fence. I'm getting people that call me and, you know, say some pretty vile things, uh, or they'll, they, they text me. And then I'm getting people to call me and say, yeah, I mean, if, if somebody doesn't show up, why do you have my counsel? Why are we paying them $235 a month? So that's all I want. I'd like to see us get either another attorney from CHW or just go with another firm and get, and have them look at what's gone on, look at the law, look at the case law, because we all know that America is not, is based on case law. That's, that's how our courts are, and so it's good to see this that Mr. Claire brought in. But we need to look at the other case laws that also affect us, and there are others. There are mountains of them. Thank you.
And Councilman McCoy?
Mr. Mayor?
And it's, yeah, one second, Mr. Jared. I think one thing to point out is that I think the two difference was, for me, this is for me, what I experienced is I was forced by the attorney to bring Councilman McCoy's absence before the council. Mr. Davis was here. He knew the law. We did not know his absence. He missed the meetings. It was brought up. He didn't say he was going to be gone. I was for, forced to have him say he was going to be gone. So that's the difference. If, you know, we knew he was going to be gone, but I'm on tape saying, I guess Mr. Davis is absent. We did hear from him at the special meeting that he was going to leave. It does not count that he was sick. I didn't know he was sick. Then he was on, he was on vacation before that, went on a vacation. But it doesn't matter if you're on vacation or sick. If you miss it, you miss it. That's what I'm trying to make everybody understand. If I was to go on vacation for sixty days and not tell anybody, I'd be removed. That's just how it is. If I knew the law, I'd be done. They'd be say, remove him. He went on vacation. Doesn't matter if I was sick. If I missed all those meetings for sixty-three days or sixty-two days, doesn't matter from Hawaii or at the hospital bedside, uh, if I didn't call in or nobody said, hey, Cory's been gone for sixty days or whatever, I'd be, I'd be vacating my seat for the law. So that, I think that's where the issue lies with me is I was forced to say, this is what you need to do for Mr. McCoy. Councilman Davis was gone. He didn't say he was going to be gone. The attorney did not bring it up. He was absent all those times. So that's the only thing I'm seeing the differences, is there was just some things that were missed from one council member to another, and that's a problem for me. I, like I said, I just want to move on from the issue, but I need to know what the law, you know, the laws apply and how we move forward from that. I think it's a learning experience for all of us. We didn't know about the law till Mr. Jared brought it up. When he texted me and said, hey, if he even ate that announcement, he's been gone so many days. Next week, he's out of there unless you guys approve his meeting. And if we didn't approve his meeting, we didn't, like you said, we didn't have compassion. Mr. McCoy would have been gone. If we'd have said, no, we're not going, you know, prove his absence, you know, he would have been vacated, was far what I understand. So that's just the problem I'm having is there's the different treatment from the attorney from one person to another, one council member. I don't want to remove anybody. I think it's been a waste of our time, and we have to work for the city and, um, work with this council to move forward. So, you know, that's what I have to say again. Mr. Jared?
Yes. Um, uh, my recollection of our conversation is a little different, um, regarding any forcing you to do anything. Um, my recollection is that I was bringing something to your attention, which you obviously were unaware of, and others around you were unaware of, and, um, Mr. McCoy's absence had gone on, and, um, it was a mystery to me as to what it actually was and, um, but I was understanding it was a bit severe. Um, and, um, nothing was being done about it, and this is a very, it's a frankly, a very common, um, um, occurrence, um, and common knowledge about, um, having to attend, um, meetings. And, um, it was, I found it odd that you all were not aware of it, to be perfectly honest. Um, and, um, but I think it's a misstatement that I was forcing anything. I was emphatic that if the council did not do something, that there was the risk to Mr. McCoy if he did not, um, come back in a certain amount of time. Um, and I thought it was, given it was a, a health issue, as I under, was learning to understand and has been confirmed now, um, that it would, would be rather unfair to, uh, to him while he was gone. Um, for it to be characterized that he was being targeted with this, I think is a complete, um, turning it completely upside down. I think I was being, um, actually very compassionate in looking out for his interests, to be perfectly honest, while he was, uh, absent. Um, because, um, I knew the ramifications of being gone beyond a certain amount of time. As I described last, um, week, those clips that were shown, um, taken, I don't want to say they were taken out of context. They were shown where they were. But the context is important here that the, the item was coming up very quickly, and there was not analysis, and was not given details about, um, when absences happened and, and so forth to really apply the law. I did, I did state that a sixty-day, um, period would apply. Um, and in fact, with there being a cancellation, I think in fact, a seventy-day, um, period would have applied in his case, but regardless, I think the way that the meetings were, um, playing out at that time in that span, sixty or seventy days wouldn't have made a, a difference. I, I think he would have ended up missing one more meeting. He would have been beyond, um, the, the seventy-day period, um, as well as, um, the sixty-day period. So that, you know, to say there's a double standard, not at all. Except that I did speak up, uh, for Mr. McCoy. I absolutely did, um, while he was out and articulated that if something weren't done, this would, would apply. So, um, if there was a double standard, it was that, um, you know, I didn't, um, speak up with, um, Mr. Drake's situation. And frankly, I, the reason I didn't is there was the obvious meeting cancellation on election night. Um, and that, um, weighed in, and there was a span there. And so I have stated multiple times now that it's my, um, opinion that, um, part B of, um, three-six-five-one-three applies because the council did, um, meant, met monthly um, on, in that month. Um, and, um, and possibly even the, the month prior to that and spanning that period of time. So I, I think B applies of a seventy-day period. And, and in fact, it's, it's very clearly been stated on the record, the period of time, uh, between last appearance and next appearance in Mr. Drake's, um, situation was sixty-two days. Um, the um, the statements that, um, the rules can't be changed. You're not changing the government code. Um, you're applying as you see the government code and, um, to, um, the facts that are before you. Um, the fact, the statement that there's a mountain of case law on this, um, quite the contrary. There's just a handful of cases. And, um, um, the one case that is an actual case go, um, goes to the fact to say that you as a council are the ones that, um, make decisions about, um, the qualifications, um, and apply this. But there's also a body of, of, of law, um, that makes the application of this, um, that it is actually done through what's called a quo warranto proceeding. And that is a trial, um, before, um, the court. And this is what the, the basis of the opinion that you were handed tonight uh, from, uh, Councilmember, uh, Claire about the, the Marquez matter. Um, that was a quo warranto case where the city council was filing a lawsuit That was a quo warranto case where the city council was filing a lawsuit against one of its own members. And as a threshold matter, has to go to the Attorney General's office to ask if this is something that is a correct application of the law and whether or not it should go forward. And so that's what the, the Marquez opinion is, is the AG saying, yeah, there's, there's enough there to, to go forward. And in fact, it did go forward and Moreno Valley did sue Mr. Marquez. And it went on for about another year of all parties having to shell out attorneys fees to prosecute that matter. So as far as any liability, I know of no liability in, that it would apply to you individually or to the city as a whole in interpreting this either in granting it in an absence or choosing not to, because there was this confusion about what to do and when, when it needs to be done. So as far as the DA, the DA is not the, the party that would be contacted about this. So I don't know what that was about.
Point of order.
And always the code of conduct, I am happy to dive into the code of conduct. But Mr. McCoy, I mean, when we met on this very issue, you did not provide me any feedback. The feedback you provided me was that you wanted to have a day long, a day long seminar and go through the process all over again. Now, after that time, it was brought up a couple of times and we, I don't mean to rehash the whole thing, but I just want to make the, the point clear. I am ready to take the direction to dive into the point, the code of conduct at any time the council gives it to me to proceed with that. And we're, we're happy to assist, but it's, what it's going to eventually essentially take is a didactic between our office and council members, our office and the entire council, and to understand what it is that each of you and all of you collectively want to see with that. So we can dive into that. Obviously this issue of absences probably should be in there, but I will tell you that it is very common for cities to not have a, a, any kind of code of conduct or procedure about excuse, not excuse, any kind of absences. It is frankly, just a matter of civility that most councils excuse absences on, without any formality. So I, I think that it clears it up. As far as Rosenberg's, yeah, Rosenberg's, we've gone over this before. It's silent on this issue. It's, it's not applicable at all. And, but it was mentioned about rules could be changed with Rosenberg's. Absolutely, yeah. You can, you can choose to, to vote to, to not apply Rosenberg's either for a particular vote right now on, in a meeting. You can choose to not apply Rosenberg's as a category and make your own rule on, on a certain thing. So Rosenberg's is malleable, you can, you can adopt it. But, and so I don't know what the issue was with that. I think there was just a, a comment that was made in the time. So, and if you would like a written opinion, all of it and all of this, I'm, I'm happy to do that as well. But again, I, I take direction from the entirety of the city council on things like that. And if you would like me to spend the money in that way, we could certainly write something up.
Thank you, Mr. Jared. Any other questions or comments for the council?
Yeah, this, the city manager, I just want to remind the council that they currently do have a motion on the floor. And that that motion, if I can reiterate that motion, to retroactively grant good cause absence for Councilmember Drake Davis for the 1015 Wairika City Council meeting. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Sir, her motion stands. I haven't gotten a public comment yet.
Point of order. I, I thought that we were at the discussion, the council discussion on this matter and that we've already had public comment.
I don't think we've had public, I haven't had public, I haven't opened up public, I might yet on this.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, this was a continuation of the prior item as a matter that is tabled. The discussion on this issue already happened last.
Okay, so I don't have to go to public comment?
Correct.
Okay. I'm sorry. I thought, I thought we were starting all over again. Councilman, Claire, yes.
Something just clarifying. I'm not saying that's what you said, but I just want to let everybody know that I spent days Googling all this stuff and looked up all the things that I found. So I'm, I'm just want to articulate as far as there's a concern of going out of council or anything like that on my part, there was not. This was all just me sitting and looking up this government code. How does it pertain to California? Is there things like that? What has been used, what works, what doesn't? And I've just been looking because what I want is us to get through this. And if, if Mr. Jared is a problem and everybody's mad, then we'll talk about that later. But we need to come together and fix this. And we need to get Mr. Davis back and we need to go forward. And, you know, and I'm not, and I'm not throwing anything at the attorney. It's, I'm not throwing anything at anybody. I just want us to get going in a positive direction, all of us. Because I feel that we can come together as a council.
Point of order.
We can come, but we can come together through this. I know that this is, and I know, and I realize I was not here for a lot of this stuff that happened. I was not on council, I get it. But it doesn't mean we can't get through this and come back together and start moving in a direction. And I think I can speak for everybody that we all want that for sure. So I just wanted to clarify that, my sources and all that stuff. So there was no confusion on that whatsoever. That's all. Thank you very much.
Any last thoughts, Mr. McCoy? Okay.
Mr. Jared, can I ask you a question? Since you were being so kind to me.
Can you speak into the microphone?
Sorry about that, sir. You were being kind to me by bringing up the 60 days. And now you're bringing up the 70 days for Mr. Davis, even though you and I disagree on that A and B apply. Cause, because I, I don't agree with you. Is there a reason why you didn't bring up the 70 days for me? Or was it just, or you, or you didn't bring up 60 days to Mr. Davis? Or why, why, why didn't he have the benefit of, of your expertise?
Yeah, well, I mean, he, he does have the benefit of my expertise and.
I ask a question. I just, can you answer the question, please?
Sure. All, this is my answer. He has the benefit of my expertise.
Just answer the question, please.
Okay, I am, this is my answer.
I don't need to hear about.
Point of order, point of order, please. Just let him answer the question.
Everyone has the benefit of my expertise and everyone has my phone number and has the opportunity to call me. In your situation, the, the immediacy of it was coming up to, right at like that council meeting night. And I did not research it. I knew this law existed. I wasn't researching it and counting days. I did know that if nothing was done, then you would have potentially been in violation. And I think whether it was 60 days or 70 days that I said, I think the way it would have played out is the next meeting after the one you were, that you came back at would have been beyond both of those. And so my concern was that you were unaware of this and that the council was unaware of this and that something should be done. So that you didn't, you didn't fall into a trap there effectively. Whether I said 60 days or 70 days, I, I don't, it's not applying a different rule. It's just simply saying that a rule applied. I, you know, frankly, I would, I guess I misquoted it. If I, had I analyzed it and known that there was a, a canceled meeting, you know, we could have gone with the 70 day standard stated. But I think looking back on it, you might've violated that as well. So.
Well, let me ask you a question that I asked.
Not the issue. The issue was that we needed to bring something up to protect you.
So let me ask you the question. Why did you not make the council aware of, why did he not get Mr. Davis the same care that I got? And you make him aware so that we didn't, we are not in this position right now and he's not in this position?
Yeah, I didn't, I, I wasn't made aware that Mr. Davis had, had missed those, those days. I wasn't keeping track. I don't keep track of these things. I'm, I'm not your, your gatekeeper. And I'm not your, your custodian on these things, any of you, whether it's, you know, distances from things or your attendance records and stuff. And so it wasn't, you know, no one was bringing it to my attention. It wasn't forefront of my mind. And I had, and the other thing is that I, we'd seen him just the meeting before at the special meeting where he, he left because he was sick. So there were other issues involved.
And you said it's very common for current other councils to not have a policy on absences. That's correct, right?
It's pretty common, yeah.
Okay, okay. I'm going to leave this council and that includes Mr. Davis, who's sitting up there with, with one thought. And that is that regardless of what happens here tonight, we've spent a lot of time and we have been misdirected by an attorney. We've spent a lot of time with the city attorney that isn't, that, that is changing their mind as they go along. Again, I'm like, I'm, I'm like Mr. Claire. I've not contacted another attorney, so that only leaves a few people. But we, we, we need as a council to look for a law firm that's going to serve us, number one. And number two, before I want to see an emotion made, I want to see a disinterested lawyer from CHW give us an opinion on this, a written opinion. Give him four weeks to do it. Mr. Davis is still sitting at the dice. He's not, he's not deist, he's not going anywhere. And then once we get that, we can be informed. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman McCoy.
Mr. Mayor, this is the city manager again. I just want to point out that on the floor, there is a current first motion. And that is to retroactively grant good cause absence for Councilmember Drake Davis on the 1015 Wairika City Council meeting. There is a motion on the floor.
Before I support that motion, I would request that within so many days, that the attorney give his written legal opinion regarding the whole case and give his written opinion. So that we're all out of the woods and that he gives his legal opinion stating what he's told us tonight. That he's given a legal, because he hasn't given a written opinion. He's just given us a verbal. If that's added, I will consider your motion so we can move forward.
I, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Middleton. I'm just, I don't remember us asking until tonight for a written opinion.
I'm asking for it tonight. We asked last, he said he, I think we asked for it last week. He said he'd be willing to do it. I think for our protection, for all of us sitting here at the diocese. And if someone else from the public maybe sue us for not doing it, that we have our attorney's opinion, professional opinion to us and the city be written up. That's all I want is his, what he stated that is.
So I, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with, with doing all of that. I'm just wondering if what, if what you're saying, Mr. Mayor, is a substitute motion that you will, you will grant the excused absence if I provide a written opinion?
I'd just say, I will, I will consider it, but I would want it added that, that if we're going to go back and, you know, go back to granting him the absence, that this was your legal opinion, that that will be provided. Showing that you gave the opinion that his, or anybody's, whether sitting here or was excused regarding 35613.
So is, is your motion that you will, you are granting the excused absence of 1019, provided I write a written opinion, put it in writing what I just said this evening and at the last meeting?
Correct. But it would have to be, not for me, isn't it? It's from Mrs. Baker, Councilman Baker, I'm sorry.
Well, I'm not, I mean.
I just don't know why we would.
You made a motion, you said you would support it if, if, and you added some stuff on. And if what you're doing.
Your written opinion, that's all it is.
Are you making a substitute motion that you will support or that you will grant? You would agree with giving a, an excused absence for 1015, provided that I put my statements in writing?
Correct.
So that's the motion on the floor as a substitute motion. It would require a second.
Does Ms. Baker's go away or my motion's on the floor as her just a substitution to the motion?
So it was a, a motion seeking a second. Now there's been a substitute motion. If that gets a second, that gets voted on. If that fails, then it goes back to, uh, Councilmember Baker's motion to finalize the second and then be voted on. And so as I'm understanding your motion, it is to grant the excused absence for 1015 if I put my statements that I made tonight in writing. Well, and it's instructing me to put my statements in writing so you have coverage for what you acted upon.
Councilman Baker, she's almost biting her nail, so she wants to ask a question.
As I understand, the substitute motion is that we will grant Mr. Davis good cause for his absence on October 15th. If Mr. Jared puts his opinion in writing. Is that the motion that's on the floor?
Correct.
Then I change my motion to that.
I am sorry, I can't hear what's being said.
I'm asking for the legal opinion from Mr. Jared, what he's giving our council of advice, his firm and himself, the opinion he's given us tonight and the previous meeting in writing regarding the absence.
I mean, I'm hearing all of this. I'm, and what I'm interpreting it as, and this is your motion, if you want to make this motion, it is granting the excused absence, directing me to prepare the legal opinions that I have said in this meeting and the prior meeting, putting all of that in writing. And in order to protect the city, you want that in writing. And you would therefore grant the excused absence for 1015.
Correct. And I think Councilman Baker was going to withdraw and add that to it. So she is withdrawing.
Okay, that's the motion. I understand the motion perfectly.
Okay. Do you just want to reread, reread it? This Councilman Baker, I'm sorry.
Let's try this again.
Okay.
Okay, so my motion is that this council grant good cause for Mr. Davis's absent, on, absence from the meeting on October 15th. And that our attorney will provide a legal opinion to us in writing, stating the information that he has provided to us from this meeting as well as the previous meeting. That's my motion and I'm, you're buying.
Correct, I have a motion. So I have that motion from Councilman Baker and I'm going to second it with, with moving on and working. I just want to add to this. For the better of our city, the better of our citizens, I don't agree what has transpired by all means. It was a complete you-know-what show and it's embarrassing. So I hope moving forward, we have learned from this. I will second her emotion, motion so we can move forward and get this council back to work. I will second Councilman Baker's motion. So I'll do real call. Councilman Claire.
Yes.
Councilman Baker.
Yes.
Councilman McCoy.
I'm going to preface it. And that is that I'd like to see a legal opinion and I'd like to see something, I see is off the screen now, from a disinterested attorney within the CHW firm, which I asked for last week and I asked for it again this week. and I asked for it again this week. So I will vote no.
Okay, and Mayor Middleton, I'm going to vote yes. So the motion passes three to one. So we will um, move forward and Mr. Drake Davis will come back to his seat and we will move forward. All right, come on back. And you got that, Mr. Ledbetter and Ms. Uh, Cindy up there?
Yeah, we're good. Thank you.
Great, all right. Um, cities, so now we're going on to um city manager and staff reports. City manager and staff can make brief announcements or reports at this time. Mr. Ledbetter.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Uh, Mayor, Wairika City Council. So I have a very brief report. So today is April first and as you've seen multiple times over in the uh, sales tax and uh, fire hall project, uh, staff memos and PowerPoints. Today is the beginning of the eight point seven five percent tax rate in Wairika city limits. Uh, I met with the consultants who will start the geotech and environmental work at the new fire hall site today. That project is moving along nicely. That work should start when things dry out later in the month. On March fifth, I attended the housing conference in Sacramento with Councilman Bake, Councilmember Baker, uh, where we learned uh, multiple things about the new housing programs in the state of California as well as homelessness in the state of California. And then the piece that we would have been waiting on for the HVAC system at the community theater has finally arrived and should be getting installed later this week, but ultimately we still do not have a timeframe. We want to make sure that it actually fires up correctly and is operational, but very positive news for the theater opening again. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ledbetter. Oh, our chief's going to come down tonight. I know, Chief, Chief Gilman, good evening.
Yeah, Chief Gilman, all the council. Um, so I promised you guys I'd bring stats. So me and uh, the fire chief are doing them every other meeting to bring the stats to you. I hope everyone's had a chance to use our online stats. They can kind of see what's going on, what's happening. So since the last meeting, we've had seventeen hundred and seventy-one calls for service. One hundred and thirty-four of those have been reports that we have to investigate. I think before I go farther on this, I want to say that I owe my department a huge thank you because these guys have been working their tails off the last couple of weeks, the last week especially. We've had nine deaths in Wairika just in the last couple of weeks. We've had five that are suspicious. Um, I'm not labeling them any type of crime, but any suspicious death gets investigated like a homicide. So we have to do full investigations. On top of that, we're handling ten burglaries. We've had one shooting on Main Street. We've had fourteen domestic violences. Still, while they're doing all of that, they've managed to make a hundred and forty-two traffic stops to work on speeders and drunk drivers. We've had several drunk driving arrests. Uh, numerous homeless calls, trespassing calls, sixty-six animal calls. And what seems to be the most important thing on everyone's mind is the three dogs at Greenhorn. We have, we've been trying. We've even brought a net gun out. We've went out and tried with a net gun yesterday for about half an hour to forty-five minutes. We had a houndsman, well, we didn't call him, but a houndsman came in today. We were able to capture one. So we have one of the dogs in custody, or he's taking the dog and we're still trying to get the other two. And that's been huge news in Wairika was the three dogs. So we are working very hard on those dogs. They're just difficult. They're dogs. That's all I have. Unless you have questions.
All right. Any questions for Chief Gilman? For at least, like, come on back. Come on back.
Uh, Chief Gilman, um, I'm amazed at the volume of calls that you guys are handling. And I had no idea of the, the number of deaths that you guys have handled. And please convey my deep appreciation for the hard work that your department is doing on behalf of the citizens of Wairika.
I will. Thank you very much. They have, they have been above and beyond. Lots of overtime, lots of staying late, missing dinners with their families. It's been amazing what they've done and what they've gone through.
Any other questions or comments? I'll just make a comment. Yeah, just echoing on um, Councilman Baker's statements is thank you and thank your um the YPD staff. I know they're out there working hard. I know you have a great group of guys. We're very fortunate to have them. We hope they stay with us and keep working hard because um, even though they don't come and see us very often, but um it's appreciated. We appreciate you and so pass that along. Thank you so much. Okay, council members, any staff? Want to go first? No, I'm pointing at your mic.
COC is tomorrow at one thirty. And I will say that one of those fentanyl deaths, in my opinion, was a student of mine. And I got a, I had just hooked her up. Her dad had died last Thursday over in the coast. And um, I hooked her, her up with her aunt on Friday night. She called and then she drove over and tried to get, take her away. And when people are hooked, they're hooked and she couldn't get, couldn't get her out of there. So it's a sad, sad story. I wish there was a happy ending to it, but there isn't. Uh, we Americans have an insatiable appetite for illicit drugs.
Thank you, Councilman McCoy. Councilman Claire.
I'm still working on getting going with the citizen of the year deal. I haven't, I'm working on that still. I reached out and I'm going to coordinate either a phone call or an email. And um, yes, good job, YPD. There's a bunch of them sitting up here, over here, not just the ones over there in uniform.
I didn't call them out, but that's okay.
So appreciate all their hard work and yes, I will make sure to coordinate with the citizen of the year better. So okay, tell me who, reach out or put in contact. I appreciate it. That's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilman Claire. I did recognize you, but I didn't want to call you guys out, so but I do recognize you. All right, Councilman Davis.
We did have a fire safe council meeting last, last week. Um, and I, I said it earlier, but I want to reiterate it. Uh, the Cal Fire and the city um, maintenance, not maintenance, but this, the city is doing a great job in Greenhorn Park. It's, they're doing some uh falling of timber, the real dead stuff. There's a lot of dead trees in Greenhorn. You can't fall them all, I guess. But uh, they will be doing that recently. And another term that they threw in that I I heard was in-season burning. So as the season gets drier, they're going to do some more burning. Uh, and they're going to burn up in Greenhorn Park uh, pretty soon with get some pine needles and stuff out of the way. Let's see. Oh, Cal Fire has a couple of chippers. And if you happen to be a person that has a project and you take it to a road that they can access and you can set it up with Cal Fire for them to bring their chipper in and and chip your uh limbs and trees and stuff that you have. And and that was something they talked about at that last meeting. And if you want a number, I have a couple of them, but you can ask me. I'll give them to you. Um, and Chief Gilman, you are doing an excellent job with your crew and and I appreciate it a lot. I'm sure the city does too. Thank you. One more comment.
All right, you're still on your floor.
Mr. Ledbetter, you're doing a great job. Just want you to know that.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. I appreciate that.
All right. I don't think I have anything to report, just I've been having my weekly meetings with um Mr. Ledbetter and we have a lot of things in the works and it's never a dull moment in the city of Wairika and um you know, I just want to encourage people to be you know, it's um, there's a lot of bad things going on and our town is suffering and we do have you know, a lot of negative things that are going against Wairika right now that is in the eye of our citizens. But just know that good things are coming around the corner and we are constantly working with our city manager, working with our citizens, working with um, different agencies and allies to make our town and your town a better place. So I know it's hard, but hang in there. We will be um you know, I think we're going to turn a corner and things will get better, but um, we're going through a little bit of a downtime right now. So I just ask that you um, be patient with us. I know it's hard, but we are working hard for you and continue to support us. And if you have a problem, always reach out to your council member. And um, you know, our city staff, they're always doing a good job too. So I always want to make um make everybody aware that um our city staff is hardworking and busy and we have a great city staff here supporting us. So thank you, everybody. Um, with that, I will adjourn the meeting at nine twenty-two. Everybody have a good evening. Be safe. Oh.
I actually had a report.
Oh, did I miss you? Did I skip you?
Yes.
I'm so sorry. Okay, never mind. I skipped. I I felt so bad. I am so sorry. How'd that happen? I didn't look that way.
First and we just did things.
I'm so sorry.
So that's okay, but I
Councilman Baker, I'm sorry.
I did attend a housing conference down in Sacramento, March fifth through the seventh with city manager Ledbetter. And um, I came away with a much deeper understanding of the complexities of the homelessness um, issues, what people are actually facing when they're homeless. Um, there were actually faces that were put to stories. I thought that that was really important. But I was also very discouraged about what I feel is a real disconnect between um, state agencies and the counties and cities that are actually trying to solve this problem. And um, I don't have any easy answers for that, but I think that it begins by communicating with the state over um, just the logistical issues that we face. I mean, you know, we get a grant or uh, uh, as jurisdiction gets a, you know, awarded a grant, they apply for a grant. But it's like, it could be several years before they actually get that money. The money's awarded and then they're like, oh, um but you have to have this. Why, why isn't your project completed? And uh, we'll give you the money after you complete the project. Um, I I just think it's a huge disconnect. Um, I am really optimistic, honestly, that the city of Wairika can actually solve its homeless issue. Um, I I really am very optimistic about that. Um, along with that, um I actually attended the board of supervisors meeting today virtually. And I had comments to make and I was hitting star six over and over and over again, trying to become unmuted. I don't know what happened. Anyway, um thank you. Um, and the uh, board of supervisors today approved a letter of support um, for the home key um, grant application. So thank you very much. Um, in addition to that, um, I just want to remind everybody that the city does have the design standard survey that's um, available through uh, the city's website. Um, it's available only through April sixth. Um, and I took the survey yesterday and it took me ten minutes. So I really would encourage everybody that's here to go online and um to complete that survey. It's very interesting and it's a great way to have a say in how the future Wairika, the city of Wairika actually looks. Um, so thank you very much for indulging my report.
Well, thank you for reminding me or waving your hand that I forgot you. I'm so sorry. Okay, with that, um, thank you for that. I will adjourn the meeting. Have a good evening, everybody.